Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us here today. But before I call the meeting to order, just a few housekeeping rules. Asking that we all keep it respectful. Like I said in the last meeting, we can all agree to disagree, but it's very, very important. It's actually imperative that we all keep it respectful. If your phones are on, I ask you to put them on silent. If there's anything that you don't like, I asked no clapping, no applause, nothing from the audience. And I'm asking that this meeting keeps it quick, simple, sweet. We're here to make a decision. Nobody wants to see the city go into a potential of a shutdown because, you know, a bunch of adults that love this community couldn't come together to find a reason to get a balanced budget and to be fiscally responsible. I don't believe in my heart that the administration wants this, and I can tell you, I can assure you that nobody on this council wants to see that as well. With that being said, Madam Clerk, today is June 28, 2024, special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, we are calling the order at 5:05. Can you please take roll call?
Pledge of Allegiance.
You have to take roll call.
Pass in Ahmad.
President.
Moby Dune.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
President.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
President.
Tom Winslow.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Before we do start a meeting and move over to the Pledge of Allegiance, I do want to give a moment of silence today. I know we just lost another following officer, our officers who serve and protect us day in and day out. William Butler Jr. survived by his, sorry, served by his wife and three children, deputy at Hillside Sheriff's Department. Let's go ahead and give him one moment of silence for him and for all the following police officers in our country. Thank you. I'm going to ask Officer Choker, but she's not here. Is she in the room? You know what? We have our president of our police department who's going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance today. The president of the Police Officers Union.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America. A civil republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Right.
Next up, we have agenda approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the special meeting of June 28. I submit it.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have approval of the minutes. There's none, public hearings and comments on agenda items only. This is open up to the public. We're going to start off in person. If there's nobody here that has anything in person, we will take it to Zoom. I ask that you know, two minutes, state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Obviously, there is only one thing on the agenda today, and that is the approval of this budget today.
This is off the agenda, but...
Hang on one second, one sir. If you're, if it's not on the agenda, I can't have you speak unless it's agenda items only. Public comments would be after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone would like to speak on agenda items only? We state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Zuhair Abdalha, 354 Rosemary, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
I just want to say, and I hope that you will approve the budget tonight, and you do what you got elected for by doing the right cuts or the additions, because the city had enough negative publicity. And the consequences of not approving the budget tonight are a lot worse than what we have already seen. So please, do your diligence and approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only? Seeing none in the audience, we're going to move it over to Zoom. Madam Clerk, do we see anyone on Zoom?
I don't see any hands raised.
About 125 participants, no hands raised. That is great. Think everybody wants to see the same thing. Right? Next up on the agenda, resolution of the Council of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, adopting and operating a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending on June 30, 2025.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution of Council of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. And said tax levy shall be composed of the constituent rates for the purposes and with estimated yields described as follows, based on the aggregate of taxable values of $1,764,135,175 for the City of Dearborn Heights, or as may be subsequently certified and amended net of tax increment capture. Further, consistent with City Charter Section 4.9A, the compensation of each city employee or officer shall be within the limits of and in accordance with the plan set forth in the Personnel Page of the budget applicable to the employer or officer, such that (a) the compensation salary or wages of the employer or officer shall not exceed the amount stated for the employer or officer in the Personnel Page applicable to the employer or officer; (b) the compensation salary or wages for each employee or officer whose position is exempt for purposes of paying overtime shall only be paid on a proportional basis during the fiscal year; and (c) the compensation salary or wages for each employee or officer whose position is not exempt for purposes of paying overtime shall be paid at a proportional basis during the fiscal year, except as may be necessary to comply with any collective bargaining agreement or overtime law applicable to that employer or officer as outlined in 11A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Saab. Before we start on discussion, Councilman Saab did ask me if he could read a statement beforehand. So I'm going to allow him to do that to the council members. Councilman, before you start, again, I ask that we stay calm, we stay collective, we stay respectful. Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Ten years ago, the City of Detroit made headlines as the largest city in America to file bankruptcy, highlighting the severe consequences of financial mismanagement. Nine years ago, Wayne County nearly followed suit, tuning on the brink of becoming the largest county to file for bankruptcy. In a stark contrast, three years ago, the City of Dearborn took a decisive action to dramatically cut its budgets and still improving the quality of its services. Our city, Dearborn Heights, has faced significant challenges. Currently, we are closed on Fridays due to budget constraints. We have been operating at a deficit for several years. Compounding on these issues, our mayor has engaged in reckless spending, creating unnecessary positions that have strained our financial resources. Additionally, we have depended on the ARPA money to keep our funds afloat, but that money has run out. Furthermore, the mayor has been given bonuses and raises without the council's approval and has failed to provide the requested documents to justify these actions. The fear that is being spread around the city and to the city residents and employees are absolutely false. We firmly believe that it's, that if the raises were given, and they should be given across the board, not to a select few. Thank you.
Let's get the meeting going. Thank you. Any other council members, any other discussions?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. I mean, I would say, am I 100% happy with this budget? Definitely not. Am I going to work with this budget? I think we should. But we have to work closely, and I do want to maybe thank the administration that finally, after my resolution back in early April, April, asking for all the information needed, was sent to us last evening and this morning. I don't know why I had to take that long for the resolution to go in effect. But I do hope, Councilor Chair, that we can get to some kind of approval today for the sake of our city and our residents.
Thank you, Councilman. I will say just a few talking points here. For the residents, I know there's been a lot of misinformation. And you know, we're all here right now, we're in the public, the media's here. Everybody's either on Zoom, we have a full house in here, and I just want to make it very clear. We have been working tirelessly, this entire body, electively. We have all worked alongside this administration, meeting after meeting after meeting. Seeing a video yesterday from the mayor saying he does not know what the council wants. We passed a resolution back in April saying what we wanted. I will tell you that when the first meeting happened to take on this budget, the meeting had to be canceled because the administration was not prepared. We had lost our comptroller and new interim comptroller. There's not even a comptroller here today. And this was the initial of our first ever budget meeting. And nothing went right. We had to cancel the meeting and reschedule an emergency meeting so that we can follow, you know, the original meetings that we had. So the timeline of what has been happening, we have met with the administration in here. Councilman Ahmad and myself have met with the administration privately to go through this budget. So for any rumor that this council and this body did not want to see the city pass the budget, that is a complete lie. I just want to set the record straight, that is not true. We want to, we want to continue to support our police, we want to continue to support our firefighters, we want to continue to support our senior services. We want to make sure that our city services are continuing to be able to pick up your waste management and anything else that the city is offering. We will never want to see that our residents suffer. We pay the highest, some of the highest taxes, some of the highest water rates. We would never want to put the city in jeopardy to say, you know, we love it, all these taxes, and we don't want to pay you guys no more. That simply just is not true. I can tell you, I'm speaking on behalf of all seven of us over here. Nobody wanted to not pass a budget. You cannot bring us the first budget, $1.9 million in a deficit. That's what it was. We were going to reach out to reserves, and we were going to use reserve money to make a balanced budget. That's not giving a balanced budget. That is using your rainy day funds to make sure you have a balanced budget. A balanced budget is being fiscally responsible. That's my first thing. My second thing, Mandy, if you don't mind, I know that you work in the comptroller's office. Can I just ask you a couple of questions on some things that I found into this budget? Maybe Mariana, you can help him out as well. Well, he can speak. I mean, you might have some of the numbers, Mandy, so if you don't mind, please stand next to her. Just on, and these could be just simple typos or simple errors, but obviously, this budget is extremely important, and we want to ensure that we're offering all the correct information. If you pull up the city clerk's office, I see here that we are budgeting one clerical three and one clerical one. Can you pull that up?
In the personnel pages?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to screen share the information with the residents?
I mean, that would be great if you could pull that up. I don't know if those on Zoom can see it as well or not, but...
Councilor Chair.
Hang on one second, Councilman.
Just a quick question.
Well, let's go, let me go through these real quick.
Plant Moran isn't here.
Is Plant Moran here?
No.
I just want to also keep in mind that we pay Plant Moran well over 1.5 million in the last three years to audit all of our books. Here, we're about to approve the budget, and nobody is here from Plant Moran Gap. So since the media's here and we're airing out all of this dirty laundry, let's just put that out for the record as well. But I don't blame Plant Moran. I don't. I also don't blame Plant Moran and why this budget is in pest as well. Let me know when you're ready.
Sorry.
Hang on one second, Gary.
Oh, yes, sorry, Gary does have a good point. When the motion was read, there was a number that was missed. It is 133.
Okay, Councilman, you amend the motion, and that number that you missed?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, in the meantime. Yes, he read 133,000, it's 133,000.
Okay. A second. Madam Clerk, can you make sure that reflects, Councilman Saab, do you second that?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Gary, thank you, Mariana, Chief of Staff.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, thank you. We have the personnel page up for the city clerk's office.
Yes, we have the city clerk's office.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I don't know if I can see it from there, but that is all right. Under the clerical, you have budgeted two positions. We have 45,000, 40, I mean, sorry, proposed budget salary is 46,379. When you add them up, we are still giving them the old salary pay, 47,418 for clerical threes, clerical ones, 45,358. What it should be is 47,892 and 45,811. So we are off, not by much, but a little, about $600, $700 on each one. I tried calling Michelle today, but she didn't answer me. I didn't want to do this here today, but...
It's okay.
I didn't hear from anybody.
We can fix that.
That's okay. So we should be short, if you don't mind.
So 47,000.
47,892 for clerical three for the clerk's office, and 45,811 versus what we have budgeted is 47,418, and clerical one is 45,358.
So I do want to point out that this may be an average of a clerical three and a clerical two.
But there's only two positions, and we're under budgeting this.
They're both clerical threes?
One is one and one is three.
So yeah, so this is the average of a one and a three.
I understand, but we're under budgeting it then.
Okay.
Even with the average, I mean, there's only two employees. You're not averaging 20 employees, you're averaging two.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we can fix that.
It's okay. So what's that missing there? Can you give me that number? Add the two that they have and then subtract it from the two that they have.
93,703.
So we're out by 1,073.
1,073, this budget is supposed to be $1,000 surplus. We're now at even.
Okay.
Actually, we might even be off, because it was 1,061 according to the mayor. We're at 1,073. We are now off by $11 on this budget. This is just the first page.
Okay.
The second thing that we have, if you move over to the treasurer's office, there's a clerical position, clerical two. We have them at 46,812. It's supposed to be 46,643.
So where are you reading these numbers? Because it's not matching what I have.
If you look at the clerical position.
In the personnel pages. Mm-hmm.
If you look at your clerical position for clerical two, you're budgeting for four of them. You're budgeting for four of them at the old price, at 46,182.
36,586.
Okay. Divide, well, you, I mean, there was a budget, you were, add, hang on, I'll show you how I came up with it. 184, 728 is what it should be. A clerical two isn't paid, isn't paid 36,224. Yeah.
Okay.
It's supposed to be 46,643.
36,400.
You have it at 36,224.
Right.
Okay. We just, they all just got raises. It's supposed to be 46,643 times the four that you're budgeting for.
Basically, we're up by like 10,000 for each clerk.
Okay.
And I'm just, mind you, I'm just putting these numbers out, there's going to be a budget passed.
Yeah, that's okay, we can fix those.
So now we're off by 10,000 there.
Times four.
Times four, and we're also off now by $11 on the other, by the, the $11 on the clerk's office. So now, right now, we're down 4,011 dollars.
40,000.
40,011 dollars right now.
Okay.
The second thing that we come up to is the comptroller's office.
Sorry, Councilor Chair, 41,301 dollars.
Okay, keep tab of that.
What was it, Councilman? 41,301 dollars.
I also want to state for the record, and I apologize that we're going through this process. Again, I tried reaching out to Michelle from Plant Moran Gap. I know she's traveling to Florida. She's going to see her daughter at Disney World, and I'm sorry that we're in this position, but we're in this position.
It's okay.
And I actually just really started digging deep into this other part of the budget, because we were focusing our minds on other things.
Okay.
So I finally just wanted to go through the entire stuff. Now that we're in the comptroller's office, there are two clerical threes, and...
One clerical three in the comptroller's department.
Two. Comptroller's office, there are two clerical threes. Over budgeting for one clerical two and two clerical threes.
So yeah.
You're budgeting for three of them.
Yes.
Yes, I know, and I know what position you're budgeting from. Two clerical threes and one clerical...
No, one clerical three, two clerical twos.
Okay, that's all right. Well, we're still off.
Yeah, that's okay, just clarifying that.
So you have the original one at 47,418?
47,161.
What's that?
47,161.
Well, it's supposed to be 40, one of them is supposed to be 47,892, because that's the new clerical three pay. The old clerical pay was 47,418. And then if you have, which is not, this one isn't much, but if you have two clerical, two positions that you're budgeting for, we were budgeting 46,182. We should be budgeting 46,643. Councilman, can you give me that number?
Sorry, Jiggo Saab, did you say we have two clerical three or one clerical?
One. One clerical three, two clerical two.
It looks like. There are two clerical threes.
Lisa says three?
I, by the way, I just, I spoke with Mr. Turner before this.
Okay, so then, sorry, I apologize.
It's okay, no big deal, no big deal. So you do have two clerical threes, and you have one clerical two.
So we would be up by 1,462 for the clerical three.
How much?
14, 14, I'm sorry, 1,462.
Okay, and then give me...
And for the clerical two.
46,182 minus 46,643. 46,182 minus 46,643.
1,61.
How much? 461, 461 plus. Yeah.
So that would be 19,23, altogether.
1,923? Okay. And when you add that up to the sum that we're off by?
That would be 41, 43,224.
You have the number, Chief of Staff?
Yeah.
$43,000 so far, and we are off budget. Then we come over here, which we can have a discussion on later with the confidential secretary, with the HR department. I wasn't here at the meeting, I wasn't feeling well, but when the council chairman was running the meeting, I believe some of the council members said they would like to see the confidential secretary's position put aside. I will state also for the record so that everybody is clear as to why we're saying this. When the chief, when the HR director, who I believe has just officially stepped down and is no longer with us, congratulations and thank her for her services, she said she did not need all those people inside the HR department, she needed herself and one other individual. So we honored her with that. And now, there's a confidential secretary. I know the council did not approve this position, but we can have that discussion later. Thank you. Well, let me just finish this list, and then we can jump into that discussion. I'm going to leave that for you guys. The next page that I have, and I think we're just about done here. If you open it up to the recreation center, we're also short about $441 on the clerical three position. We have it still budgeted at 47,418, and it should be 47,892. There is one clerical, confirm just the exact number. We can move on to the ordinance department. We have two clerical twos. Well, I'm going to wait on Councilman Ahmad, who's being our accountant today.
Actually, this is like up by 1,040, Councilman.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. On the ordinance department, we have two clerical twos here. We're budgeting 46,182. We should have been budgeting 46,643 for two of them. So do 46,643 times two. And then... See, I didn't, I didn't get all the information on the ordinance department, but I think I could be a little off. But I do know that the councilman, Winslow, passed the resolution to have three ordinance officers, and we're only budgeting for two. Currently, and I don't know exactly what that number is, but it would be, I'm assuming, 47,968 is what they would all be starting off at.
Okay.
You got there? This one from the fire department, do we still have a clerical person in the fire department?
Yes.
We are budgeting one at 47,892. Thank you, that one was correct.
Thank you.
Building and engineering, we have a clerical one in that department, correct?
Three clerical ones.
Three clerical ones. They should be budgeted for 45,811, not 45,358. They would also be shorting them as well. Yes, we are three short of this.
811? 45,811?
Building and maintenance? The custodian position, is this a new hire?
I believe that position is vacant currently, but it is an existing position.
Correct, would it be a new hire, though?
Yes, once we go through the civil service process.
We're budgeting them for a top-tier hire, which is okay. I'm okay with that, but I mean, just to kind of balance out the numbers, you would actually, you have it budgeted for 47,589? It should have been budgeted for 46,000 and some change. I don't, I don't remember the exact number off of my head. And then I have DPW Water. We have four clerical positions being budgeted. One of them is a clerical three, and they are budgeted, again, and guys, I just want to make it very clear. I truly believe in my heart, this was an honest mistake by the administration, because we had just passed a budget, or we just passed a tentative agreement, and so the clerical positions here are not budgeted for what they should be getting paid. So we're actually misbudgeting this. And I truly believe it was probably just an honest mistake. I know we, you know, we had an interim comptroller. He had started, the first week we started budgeting. So I don't want to put any blame on anybody. I'm, I'm going to give, you know, the high, we're going to take the high road on this and say, these are honest mistakes. But these are honest mistakes that I'm glad we've caught on to, because then we'd be giving the wrong information to the state of Michigan. But if we come back to the clerical position, we have one clerical three, should be budgeted for 47,892. Again, we are budgeting 47,000... Again, we are budgeting forty seven thousand four eighteen for it, which we're under budgeting. And then there are, I believe, three clerical twos, is that correct? In the DPW water department? Thank you, Carrie. We are also budgeting for them forty six thousand one eighty two. We should be budgeting forty six thousand six forty three. We should be budgeting that times three, not, so we'll be off on them as well. And for myself, that's all that I have on the mistakes that I was able to, and I, again, I think these are honest mistakes. I don't think the mayor or, or Plant Moran Gap or anybody specifically out here came out and said, you know, let's not budget enough money. But I know that there are potentially some cuts that we're gonna have to make today in order to offer a, being fiscally responsible and a balanced budget, because currently, councilman, if you can give me that number. And in a sixty, you know, in a sixty one million dollar, uh, budget, I don't believe a hundred thousand dollars is a big deal. I think we can find it somewhere in this budget tonight. I think all the taxpayers will get their city services, and all of our employees will be able to get back to work. Just for that final verdict of the number.
Uh, fifty nine thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars.
Fifty nine thousand, where's my pen? We'll call it sixty thousand dollars is what we're short right now, which is truly not a bad thing. I think these were just simple errors that, uh, were made, and again, we're gonna give everybody here the benefit of the doubt, right? We're not gonna be prideful, and, uh, we're gonna move here. I know, Councilman Ahmad, you said you have something you want to speak on?
Yes, Councilor Chair.
Go ahead.
Chief of Staff, it brought, was brought to my attention, we have, if we look at the police department, we have fourteen command officers. Uh, I know we have like three lieutenants and twelve sergeants, and we budgeted for ninety nine thousand four hundred and seventy five for each one. Do all get to pay the same amount?
No.
So-
There was different steps for where they are in their careers.
But do they, I mean, since we have three lieutenants and twelve sergeants, I believe probably they get paid differently, so how come, how did we come up with that number?
It's the average, yeah.
Average for all the fourteen? Is, is it possible to know, like, each, or maybe lieutenant, how much is the lieutenant, how much is the sergeant, or?
Um, yeah, we can look at their contract.
And, uh, it also says here, we, we have fifty patrol officers at the highest pay.
I spoke to Michelle about that as well. She said she was gonna lower that number, but I didn't hear that.
Sorry, what's the second question?
It says like, we're budgeting here for fifty officers at the highest pay.
At seventy nine thousand-
Seventy nine thousand six hundred and ninety nine. Do we pay?
Again, it depends on where they're on their career, they wouldn't necessarily be getting the full salary.
Some people gets paid more and some people less, that's the average you're talking about?
Right.
So I know, you know, in the past, when we did the budget, you know, God, God bless Elizabeth Porter Perry, she used to break down, you know, yours, you know, you know, here's your pro, you know, patrol officers for step one, step two, step three. Step three, we're budgeting X amount of dollars. Step two, we're budgeting X amount of dollars. Step three, we're budgeting X amount of dollars. It does not say who the officers are, it doesn't say anything, but we know that there's ten step ones, ten step twos, ten step threes, for example. And so we would budget for those ten, X amount of dollars. But now what's happening is, we're budgeting all for step three, and we're putting everybody at the top. And so I don't also believe that that's being really, um, I think that's not giving us the right budget number here. I think this is inflating the number and overspending on this number, when in reality, it should not be that high, because I don't believe you have fifty patrol officers. That would be great, that would be amazing. Maybe at one point we did, but I know today, we don't have fifty patrol officers making eighty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, we can work on that.
Do we want to maybe say, budget twenty five of them, and then budget twenty five, uh, regular officers, starting pays? Or do you want to do twenty, ten, twenty? For step one, step two, step three, because I know step two gets paid a different more amount, and then step three is at the highest. But what we're doing is, we took fifty, we budgeted the highest for them all, but we didn't do that for like all our clerical employees. We actually under budgeted them.
If you want, we could do it at the step two for today's purposes, just to make it faster, to do all fifty at step two.
Why, why don't we do twenty, ten, twenty? Why don't we do twenty for, for step one, twen- ten for step two, and twenty for step three?
I don't, I'm not sure how many are at which level right now, so that's why I'm a little bit concerned.
Then we can budget all fifty for step two. We'll, we'll, we'll give and take.
Okay.
So how much would that be?
I don't, I don't know. Well, she's gonna give us that number right now. Can you give it to us?
For everyone at step two?
What, what does step two get paid?
Sorry, one second.
Starting pay.
Councilor Chair, real quick?
Yes, sir, councilman.
I mean, why can't we just have the actual number? It's always, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous, kind of averaging it out and guessing ten and twenty and ten.
So, a- again, I just want to make it very clear, this is not the council's budget, this is the mayor's budget. We are just skimming through on what things that we find.
Councilor Chair?
Yes, councilman. Well, Mariana, you're looking that up, or if you can even give us the actual number. I mean, obviously, I want this budget, budget to pass. I mean, the state of Michigan just passed something called a skinny budget, where six hundred million dollars was not agreed on, but they passed the budget and setting aside six hundred million dollars, and they went on till almost four in the morning. So like, this happens day in and day out, they stayed until five in the morning in the state of Michigan. You know, Dearborn Heights, which is a lot smaller, smaller budget.
Not staying till five, though.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm willing to stay here till midnight tonight to figure it out. Yes.
Councilor Chair, we're, we're budgeting for fifty three officers. I truly don't believe we even have half of those officers.
We're budgeting fifty, councilor.
Well, you gotta remember-
Fifty, I'm sorry.
Fifty, but you gotta remember, if there's new hires, you have to make sure that you're budgeting for those new hires.
I understand that.
But not at the highest pay?
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, we are in deficit now, we're just trying to, make it balance, I guess.
There is one more thing that I wanted to see.
Again, I do apologize, I, I tried reaching out to Michelle, but she is heading on vacation. And then our deputy comptroller, uh, had a passing in the family. My heart goes out to him and his family, and I'm so sorry for your loss. And I believe our interim comptroller had his last date today, surprisingly.
Okay, so, I don't know how many we have on each step, but I did just do the average of all of our currently employed police officers, and it is forty three. Um, so, the average is seventy eight thousand five hundred and fifty eight. I would recommend we use that number.
Sorry, can you say that number again, seventy eight thousand?
Five hundred and fifty eight.
So that drops it by, uh, almost, uh, a thou-
Councilor Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do we have forty three currently employed patrol officers?
Seventy nine is what we had budgeted for, so seventy eight is pretty close.
Don't forget, this is a fluted document, like, even if we kind of lowered it, and we have to come back on Tuesday in order to make sure that we're ready for the fiscal year, we can do that, and we can always amend the budget.
So Councilor Chair, basically, this is, we're taking off eleven hundred forty one dollars per office, like, per position, times fifty, that gives us fifty seven thousand and fifty dollars.
Nice, we're still down by three thousand, we'll find it.
Council, Councilor Chair?
Yes, sir, councilman.
Chief of Staff, we, we have forty three current employed patrol officers? That's what you decided, we have forty three?
Forty three.
And we're budgeting for seven additional.
They are labeled as patrol officers in our records, yes.
Well, that's good to know. I thought the number was a little less than that.
Oh, that's not true, because it includes resource officers, they're not patrol.
They're patrol officers.
Resource, school resource officers aren't considered patrol, right? Or they are?
I don't know, I, I don't know-
They are patrol officers, even though they're resource officers.
And they give, they give their life every single day, and we thank them, and everybody's equal in my heart, in my eyes.
Councilor Chair, I think the point we're trying to get at is, you know, officers on the street, you know, even though they do a great job at the schools, I mean, that's great, but we're just-
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if, I, I, I mean, if we have forty seven police officers, that is, that is amazing. Forty three, that's great.
Patrol officers, yeah.
Maybe we'll send an email, sir, I wanted to see them more in our, in our streets, like, inside of the neighborhoods. But that's great.
Councilor Chair, it's a-
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief of Staff, says we have, we're budgeted here for two clerical positions. Do you know what level are they?
In the police department?
Yeah.
They would be considered two clerical threes. So we're actually off on that.
Four clerical threes. Sorry, we just did a change, uh, so there's four clerical threes that are in there for this upcoming fiscal year.
Budgeting for two.
We're only for, there's two.
There are two.
It's okay, we'll just raise it a little bit.
Sorry, that is a recent change, so they did just move in there, that's why I just asked.
Okay.
So we do-
Forty seven thousand eight ninety two times four.
Sorry, so we have four now, not two?
Correct.
Okay, and how, how much is the, for clerical three, is the pay?
Forty seven thousand eight ninety two.
Actually, I did just get the-
No, it's, uh, forty eight thousand three sixty six.
How much?
Forty eight thousand three sixty six.
That's what it says in here, but I think it's forty seven eight ninety two.
Yeah, possibly forty seven eight ninety two.
I just want to make sure I'm correct.
So I just pulled up the salaries for the TPOM pay scale. So a clerk three, here are the years. I don't know what year they're in currently, in all honesty.
If we just hired two, so that's year one?
They've been with the union, so they moved from within, so that's why it's a little bit complicated to know exactly.
I think Carrie's not in her head, she might have some information.
They're all at the top.
They're all at the top level? So forty seven thousand eight hundred and eighty five point fifty one.
Forty seven, eight hundred and ninety five?
Eight hundred eighty five point fifty one.
Okay, so we budgeted here for two at forty eight three sixty six. Okay, so now, even-
Councilor Chair?
We're off, just with the clerk now, ninety four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and forty, and four cents. If you add that to whatever before.
Ninety four thousand?
Yes.
Because we're adding two. Oh, because we're adding-
We added two, yeah. Okay, our budget now is off by hundred and fifty four thousand three hundred and sixty seven dollars and forty cents.
Councilor Chair? So, let me, let me just get an understanding. See, I, I, I mean, I, I, again, I just want to make it very clear, I don't like coming into the meeting and just, you know, barging in on certain questions, but I tried to do this ahead of time. Maybe we are, did we budget these two positions? Who were they budgeted with before?
I think it was the prior to clerical that we had in there, and again, there's two new that are being added.
These two, is what you're saying?
It's a new, it's a new movement, so I think when we started the budget process, they weren't in the police department, they are now.
I know, but they were budgeted somewhere else at one point?
Correct.
Where were they budgeted at?
Councilor Chair, they were budgeted last year in the police department. The, says the budget for twenty three, twenty four, for, for clerical.
Yeah, but-
They were in your last year's budget, then they took them out.
Yeah, okay.
And now they're putting them back in, for some reason.
Okay.
This is a lateral move from a different department.
Yeah.
Okay, so why are we then hiring new positions to HR and the comptroller? Moving these around the city?
Because that's one of their rights and the union contract, they get to move, uh, within the departments as positions open up.
Okay, so, so-
Bob, Bob, Councilor Chair, I'm sorry, but do you know where we, how many union positions were removed to hire, the civilian positions, that were union prior?
I believe we're down three union positions.
Were these two positions union also?
I don't believe we removed-
Yeah.
So the comptroller?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to come up to the mic.
Sorry, she's our civil service representative, so I'm just looking at her, because I know she knows the process a little bit better.
It's okay, we're just, we would, you just want to get the right numbers.
It was my understanding that one of the union positions in comptroller, as well as the former union position in HR, were moved to the police records positions to create the two new ones. So they're just, current union positions just moved from two different departments to police.
Did we lose, on the record, you're saying we lost no union positions? I thought, I, because what I was told was from an anonymous union employee, who really called me anonymous, saying I don't know who I spoke to, told me that they lost up to three union positions.
I'm not aware of any that we've lost, there are some that are vacant.
Okay, are we still budgeting for them?
That need to be filled, as far as I know, yes.
I know the confidential secretary used to be, when, I think her name was Mariana, I, I don't want to-
Yes.
Yeah, I don't want to say Mariana when it was-
Don't say names.
No.
Yeah, that used to be a union position, and now we're taking it to a confidential secretary, so we are, that's one right there that we're submitting.
But that's one of the positions that was moved to police.
No.
Well, no, HR used to have a position there that was union.
Correct.
She retired. We are now taking a confidential secretary, and we're saying, you're gonna come in, but you're not gonna be a union employee anymore. So now you technically are eliminating a union position.
It's not in that department. It's my understanding through the contract process, they moved it to a different location. So the union still has that numbered spot, it's just in a different location.
Okay.
So it's just to create new false positions, is what it is?
No.
It didn't exist before.
What, what did it?
The co- in, in that department-
There was always a secretary there, I think they just labeled it a new name.
No.
No.
No?
There were just, yeah, there were just two people.
Well, no, I'm saying before, you know, when Elizabeth was there, she did have a secretary. What was her name?
Don't say names, please. But there was a confidential secretary, or sorry, there was a secretary that was a clerical-
Three.
One position in the HR department. She was a clerical one position that was in the HR department. It was requested that that position become a confidential secretary. The position was moved to the police department as a clerical three position, so the union continues to have the same amount of clerical staff within the union. But we did request an additional confidential secretary for the HR department within those negotiations.
In the, uh, negotiations with the union.
So it wasn't that we removed from the union, we just created an additional non-union position.
Wish you would have made it, that's all. Any other questions from our council members?
Yes.
Go ahead, councilman. Before you start, how much are we, uh?
Well, so we were short hundred and fifty four thousand three hundred and sixty seven dollars and forty cents. Uh, but we shaved fifty seven thousand from, uh, from the patrol officers' positions. So we're down ninety seven thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents.
How much was that, please?
Ninety seven thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents.
Okay. One last question here. On the three lieutenants and twelve sergeants, obviously, we're over budgeting like we did with the patrol officers. Why don't we budget this accurately?
Where, sorry?
For the-
The command officers.
The command officers at fourteen positions, three, you don't, you're paying them all at lieutenant prices. We know we only have three of those.
In the fire or in the police department?
Police department. Right there?
Are you speaking of the command officers?
Correct.
Okay.
Says fourteen? You have, I mean, that one should have never been averaged, that one should have been really broken down. Says fourteen. You have, I mean, that one should have never been averaged. That one should have been really broken down.
None of them should have been averaged.
None of them should have been.
I know. I mean, I'm, you know, again, this is not our budget.
Well, yes, it is.
I'm saying, this is the proposed budget from the mayor is what I'm saying. We are now correct, making the corrections.
I'm sorry, Mariana.
It's okay.
You're doing a great job. Like three in one right now.
You're doing a great job. Do you know what the, the, the pay is for a lieutenant? What the pay is for a sergeant? Or if maybe we have our police chief or?
It's about a hundred and two thousand fifty-nine and eighty-eight cents.
What is it?
A hundred and two thousand fifty-nine and eighty-eight cents for lieutenants.
For lieutenant. What are sergeants' starting pay?
I don't know about the starting pay. I'm sorry, I need to get the pay schedule for police, but, um, we're budgeting them currently at ninety-six thousand three hundred and ninety and six cents.
I'm sorry, ninety-six?
Ninety-six thousand three hundred and ninety and six cents.
Council Chair.
Yeah, Council.
Just to go back to patrol officers.
Your mic on?
Yes.
Eat up the mic, lady. Your voice is kind of soft.
I don't like my, eating mics, but, uh, uh, patrol officers, there's actually thirty-nine current patrol officers. So Council, uh, Proton, please adjust that back to the number.
Well, I mean, there's, there's thirty-nine. We still want to budget in case, hopefully we hire more.
No, no, but, but, right.
Yeah.
Pull them out now and just balance it and come back later and add them when we got, when we need.
By the way, for full disclosure, Councilman Ahmad has got a master's in engineering. He's a math whiz and he's very, very, very good with the numbers.
I'm gonna mess up, no. Just on Tuesdays.
Top, top of his class, by the way, as well. Valedictorian of his class in college. Unheard of. And he's here serving the city of Dearborn Heights.
On a Friday.
I might offer him the comptroller position. You should apply for it. Good laughs, good vibes. Let's all enjoy each other, enjoy each other's company. You know, breaking records, a hundred and sixty people on Zoom. I don't think it's ever happened. Clearly made headline news everywhere. Channel seven, channel four. Thank you guys for being here. Yeah. Nothing from the audience, please.
Also, Council Chair, while we're still waiting, also, the police department. Why did we, um, why did they budget the emergency manager with the police department? That's a department of its own. It's already budgeted and the budget is its own.
Oh, yeah, that's great. So this seventy-five thousand, that's two.
Just to clarify, no, uh, the emergency management doesn't have its own fund. It has typically been charged to the police department historically. Um, that is where it belongs. Um, so that is.
It's got its own, it's got its own page.
It's got its own personnel page and its own, um, new salary, but there's no salary line item in it. Like, there's no fund in our payroll, payroll system for it. So they've always been charged to the police department.
We're under budget. I think we're under budget.
Under budget? Yeah, it's okay. We'll just bump it up. We'll figure it out. Thank you, Chief Staff. You're doing a great job. Mayor, you did a good job with the great hire here. You're welcome.
All right, Council Chair. Okay, we, we under budgeted for the command officer by seventy thousand two hundred and seventeen thousand thirty-six cents. With the new number that you gave me, Madam Chief of Staff. So we budgeted one million three hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars, where we were supposed to budget one million four sixty-two, eight sixty and thirty-six cents. With the new numbers that you just gave me. With the salary of one oh two for the lieutenants and ninety-six for the sergeants.
I thought we were gonna lower that. Looks like we gotta raise it. What's that number?
Seventy thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and thirty-six cents.
We want to make sure that we pay our officers because we love our officers.
So that takes us to. We're off by a hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-six cents at the moment.
Write that number down for me. Just circle it.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Um, are we still making comments on the motion?
Yeah, 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 absolutely. I'm just waiting on Mariana, but if you want to speak, please.
Yeah, I mean, is, is she looking up stuff? I'll wait for her to look, just looking it up.
Well, no, I think she's just writing the number down. Right, Mariana?
I have some comments.
Yep, yep, yep. But I'll start off with Councilman Wenzel. We'll make our way over to Councilman, uh, we'll go to Councilwoman first. Ladies first.
Ladies first.
Then I'll go to, uh, Councilman Constance. Ladies first?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Breyer.
Okay, this may be out of line, but have we received any money for our grants at this point? Actually in hand?
No.
Nothing?
No, but we've removed everything that we've not. So there was a million dollars for the fire department. We asked it to be removed.
I, I thought we removed most of it, but I thought I saw a couple left in there, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if, I mean, I don't know if I missed any, but, um, I, you know, speaking with the mayor and Michelle and the Chief of Staff, we removed the one for a million dollars, I believe, correct?
Correct. And just as a reminder, uh, the money comes in after we've expended. So when we send the reports of what we've spent, then they reimburse us for that money, typically with most grants.
All right, that's for the nine eighty, but the million would not even approved toward the.
We removed that.
The fire one, yes, we removed it. It's still in the works. No.
Okay, thank you. Councilman.
Technically, we were almost two point nine in deficit now with that million.
Well, no, because that million was a wash. She put it in and so Michelle, according to Michelle, she explained to me was, the million was charged here and paid here. So she used and paid. Yep. Uh, Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you. Um, there's still a lot of things in this budget that I'm, I'm not happy with, you know, six hundred thousand dollars in our, our highway, our roads. I know we're getting two hundred and fifty thousand back from the S fifty-one, but I'm sure they asked for extra and they didn't get extra, they got cut. And I'm sure every department's the same way. They asked for stuff and got cut. But, um, that being said, you know, it's, it's a shame that we got to this point, you know, with all the negative publicity on TV and social media. You know, it's been directed to our city. It's making our city look bad, but, you know, it's not our city. Um, or the residents that are looking bad. Uh, we have a great city with great residents. Uh, the problem is our leadership, including myself, who are at fault on this, you know. We should have taken control and used our authority months ago and got this budget passed and adopted. But we were, you know, we're hoping to work with the administration and, uh, everybody in the city to get it passed a long time ago, but unfortunately that didn't happen. And no matter what happens tonight, and I've talked to people from these three departments, fire, police, and DPW. And they, they assured me that they took these jobs to serve the city. And regardless of what happens, they will be on the job tomorrow, serving the city. Even if they try to get locked out, they will be here to serve the city. I know, I wanted to eliminate the HR confidential secretary. Did we figure that in these numbers here?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
Cause we still have to make sure that we're budgeting for the three.
Right.
Cause we're only budgeting for one additional person.
That was my next thing. You know, eliminate the confidential secretary in HR, however, adding the ordinance office that we had in there that was mysteriously taken out.
Two of them were.
One, two of them were, no, they, they budgeted for two. We wanted three.
Correct.
They budgeted for two.
Correct. I'm sorry, I thought they removed the two.
No, they, I, I believe the final budget was, was two in there. However, also, we adopt, we passed, um, a year ago, probably, a, um, a raise, uh, for our, our CDBG department. And this was, this was voted on by city council and approved.
The mayor said he was gonna look into and give.
Well, that's, that's fine, but we need to put it on tonight. The CDB department, CDBG, is, is not funded by taxpayer money, in a sense. It's funded through HUD. So none of us, City of Dearborn Heights taxpayers actually pay the salaries.
Hang on, Councilman. It is funded by taxpayers' money. It's not coming from our general ledger of, of our, the, what we've levied from taxpayers. So what you're paying is to the federal government, which is technically.
Yeah, that's what I said, technically, that's what I said.
Yeah. So taxpayers in Dearborn Heights are paying, uh, you know, towards that.
Well, everybody's paying, not just us. It's around the whole country's paying it, the HUD thing. I think it's, whatever, however it is paid, but it's paid out of HUD. It's not out of our budget at all. It's HUD, HUD's paying, giving money to the City of Dearborn Heights to run the CDBG department. And we, you know, we raised the director's pay to ninety-five thousand and to this date, he, he hasn't gotten a penny.
And, and the employees.
Yeah, and the, the employees, we had, uh, we had our, our grant coordinator at thirty-eight dollars an hour, raised to thirty-eight dollars an hour. And our, um, project coordinator, the thirty-five dollars an hour, and our program coordinator, the twenty-five dollars an hour. And none of these four have gotten a penny on this raise. And probably legally, they're, they're owed retroactive pay.
We've asked for a retro pay.
And, but I know we've asked for it, but we, what, how much have we got? Zero. And that's been a year probably or something. I'm pretty close to it. And that, that's, that's, I mean, that's something that we voted on. We made a motion. It was seconded. We discussed it. We voted on it, it passed, and this, this ignored. And like a lot of other things, we voted on and passed, were ignored. And, uh, I'm just, you know, this, this type of thing, this budget here, there's so many things in there. Averaging, you know, you got twenty, twenty people and you're averaging their pay. You know, I was, we want to see what each person may, you know, on a budget. This is our budget, you know. We, how can we go back and say, oh, you owe this guy or this girl, you know, eighty-five thousand? You know, you budgeted her for, for seven, eighty-seven thousand or something, you know. I mean, just having these averages, that's not being transparent. And, uh, you know, to, and not, to adopt a budget and this, and like this, I'm, I don't know. It's gonna be tough.
Well, I think overall, we need to adopt a budget and I think what we need to do as a council, maybe host a study session, call Plant Moran back here and say, hey, we found some things. This is not enough. This is not good. And, you know, look, Councilman, you're entitled to this. Plant Moran Gap does not work for the administration. They work for the City of Dearborn Heights. The taxpayers is actually who they pay for, work for.
Council Chair, I, I asked the representative from Plant Moran a month ago to give us some figures. Haven't got a, not one figure yet.
You know, listen.
They're not working for me.
I mean, then we can eliminate Plant Moran Gap tonight.
Well, I don't want, I don't, I didn't say that. Don't get, don't get me wrong. I didn't say that. Don't come personal. I mean, I'm just saying, they, they, they're not working for me. I, I, I asked them specifically to do something and it wasn't done. I don't know. Who directed them to do, to not do it? I don't know.
Thank you. Councilman Constance.
Thank you, Council Chair. I want to thank our colleagues, uh, the administration, the Chief of Staff, Mariana, the mayor, our interim comptroller, uh, Don Turner, and everyone for working on this budget. Going forward, the city has to pass a balanced budget by law. I think what, uh, will be helpful is full disclosure, all the information, what everyone's getting paid, open, honest, adult discussion, and compromise. And coming to an agreement sooner than later. That's it.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chief of Staff, do we know, do we have fourteen people in the command officers' unit? Like, are they all hired? Like, is it fully, fully hired, fourteen people?
I think we might be budgeting in case somebody gets promoted or whatnot.
Well, they requested twenty-two and we only budgeted for fourteen, so. Council Chair, also, I have a, I have a question. I know this is, uh.
Well, that, Councilman, uh, Councilman Ahmad's question be asked first.
Sorry, how many lieutenants and command officers?
It says twenty-two. You budgeted for fourteen. The request was for twenty-two, Councilman.
Maybe more people, they assumed were gonna get promoted, like, I don't know. Maybe there's not positions available, funding? I know we also asked for a question, just for like a typical number, how much we paid in attorney fees from Plant Moran Gap. We never received that either.
Attorney fees for Plant Moran Gap?
No, no, no. How much money, I asked Plant Moran Gap to add, to give us that figure of how much we paid just in attorney fees in this, in the last year.
Oh, that's, that should be in your corporation council.
No, 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 not our corporation council, because we didn't just.
It's in their budget. So under contractual services, under the corporation council's budget.
But no, because our labor attorney is not put under his budget. It's put in a separate, different part of the budget. I just have to find it and now I added those two together. But they're not, he's, the labor attorney is not under, uh, his budget.
It may be under HR. I can check.
But, but it's okay. I mean, the, the moral of the story is, we've, we've been, asked Plant Moran Gap a few questions. Councils just haven't gotten everything yet.
Okay, so I see twelve sergeants that are currently employed.
And how, and how many, and how many lieutenants?
Three.
And three lieutenants.
So, so we need to budget for fifteen then?
Whoa.
So we're, we're off again.
Again, I would be cautious with that because there are promotional processes that take place.
Well, no, you're under, you're under budgeted.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, you guys are off by seventy-nine thousand.
No, no, this is more. We have one more within budget for Council Chair, so there'll be seventy, two, seventeen, six, plus add one more of, uh.
You only have, Chief of Staff, you only have budgeted for fourteen employees between, uh, lieutenants, which are three, sergeants, which you tell them us now are.
Twelve.
Twelve. That's fifteen. So you guys under budgeted this one.
So you under budgeted by a hundred and seventy-two thousand, two seventy-seven and twenty-four cents. Now, this is just, uh, this is in a.
How much is our total number?
That would be a hundred and sixty-seven point four, seventy-six cents plus. We're down by two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
All right, can we take maybe a fifteen-minute break to get all of these numbers together and I can double-check with Mr. Ahmad where we are and then get back to this?
Why don't we get through some, I think, let me hear from one of, some of the council members. I, I don't want you to feel overwhelmed at all, and I'm sorry if you are. You're doing a great job, but I want you to know that tonight, we're budget, we're, we're gonna pass a, a balanced budget. We're gonna be fiscally responsible, all of us collectively. Um, but what I want to do before we take on that is first hear from any of our council members.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So for dispatch, I know we have a huge shortage for dispatch. On the weekends, usually officers answering calls. Why did we go from thirteen to budget for eight?
I mean, you've got to keep in mind, uh, Councilman, that the administration is probably making these decisions.
But these are, decisions are important to safety, the public, uh, safety at risk.
I don't know. Mayor, do you want to have anything on that? Honestly, I, I don't even know what to answer it.
Okay, so, yeah, it does say here that eight budgeted, so that was, that was turned in by the police department that we budgeted for eight, uh, dispatches.
How many do we currently have?
Uh, gotta check that. Can you check, Chief of Staff? I don't have the list of personnel.
Eight in my record.
We have eight.
Okay. So we're budgeting eight? That's all we need? We don't need to budget for fourteen or thirteen?
We're always short dispatches.
I mean, Councilman, right now, we're budgeted, we're, we're under budget right now, so.
That's fine, but again, public safety.
I, I agree. You know what we can do?
There's no number to public safety.
We, we can find ways to go through the budget, which I said we're gonna do.
And I got another question for the Chief of Staff. How many FOIA coordinators does the city have?
Two.
Why do we need two?
One is in charge of, actually, well, two, because one is in charge of all police FOIAs, one is general, and we also have an individual in the police department that also assists with the fire, sorry, fire department, that assists with the fire FOIAs, because of HIPAA violations and things like that.
When was this position created?
The FOIA coordinator was created last fiscal year, I don't recall the exact date.
Was this position just made up, or did it exist before?
The position was currently done by a lieutenant, and it is not necessary to have a certified police person do a clerical job that a civilian can do. So we decided when that person retired, to offer a lower pay to a civilian that can provide the same services.
Was this person hired from within, or?
No, it went through the civil service process.
Council chair.
Council chair, I'd like this position to be removed.
Is that a union or non-union job now?
It's a non-union job.
Now a non-union job.
How about logistics coordinator, Chief of Staff?
It's a non-union job.
Was, did that exist before?
No.
And when was this position created?
Last year.
Did council approve this position, or either position?
No.
Okay. I'd like to see this position removed from the budget also, please.
Council chair.
Mayor, please.
When, when you're ready.
Point of order, council.
Okay, he said when you're done, it's okay, let me collect it and calm.
Also, Chief of Staff, I go back to the emergency manager, I see here it says seventy-five thousand in the police personnel page. When you go under the emergency manager, there's no number for it.
It's a long time.
Right, but you're saying it's coming from the same general ledger, but it's not. And is it, and it is its own department.
What we can do is, councilman, is we can ensure that it's moved out of the police department and put in its own. There you go, that resolves that one. Matty, if you don't mind.
That's a little complicated for today.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
If you want, we can amend it tomorrow, because that would require us to create a new general ledger number. That, again, I would recommend that we do that the following week.
That's fine, that's fine. Just know that we're gonna amend the budget to do that.
Sure.
Make sure that the.
And then, Chief of Staff, I'm sorry, going back to the same page before we take a break. The crime analysis, was that a new position, or is it an existing position?
A new position.
Okay. Nobody ever did that before in the department?
No, but it's good to have one.
No, no, exactly. Did it come in front of council for approval, or was council made aware of it?
No.
Then also the mechanic?
The mechanic came before the council.
Was that a, that's a union position, correct?
Yes. And it did come before the council. The council approved it.
And all four clerical positions, those are existing, or are these?
We're adding two additional.
But are these are within the city?
Yes.
Okay, lateral.
Council chair.
Yep, councilman, once, well, hang on, I'm sorry.
I'm the mechanic, he might have came from DPW, I think.
Yeah, yeah, he is, but it's still councilman Sabs, and then I'll get to you, well, then it's the mayor.
That's all I wanted to mention.
Then it's you.
So, the police department has two custodians, right?
Yeah.
Does the.
Actually, I'm sorry, the emergency manager had already been created a new general ledger account, so they should be removed from the personnel pages of the police department.
Okay, so that's minus seventy-five thousand.
It's already been minus here.
Yeah, it's already been minus here.
She, I believe, you asked for that early on, and she did it.
It's still chosen.
I know.
I'm sorry, councilman.
Hang on one second, I'm sorry.
Just to make sure.
I know, just one second.
The custodian positions, we have two for the police department, is this one approved, one for the courthouse, or is the courthouse has its own?
Courthouse would be.
No.
Council, do you have any other questions?
I'm sorry, I think I missed the third position that Mr. Sab requested. Councilman Sab, can you repeat? Logistics coordinator, FOIA coordinator, what was the third?
Analysis. Crime analysis.
Council chair.
Yes.
If I may, sorry, as the individual council members are making requests, we typically need the council as a whole to vote in order to implement those changes.
Correct, 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 we're just writing things down right now.
Okay, perfect. I was like, do you want me to do it afterwards?
Councilman Ahmad, just write down with those numbers, if we were to eliminate those three positions.
Are they all, all these?
Well, don't add them up, just write it down, the number, and then we can go through it right before we make a decision and a discussion amongst the council.
Council chair.
Hang on one second, councilman. Actually, go ahead.
I do not see custodians for the court.
Okay, so we'll leave the two, we don't want to leave the.
But is, is one getting funded through the court, or no? Because I know they split costs.
I'm not sure, but those two custodian positions would be considered union positions, and I would hate to eliminate a union.
I'm not, I'm not eliminating no position.
Okay.
I'm just making sure it's against what.
Council, other than the, councilman, other than the custodian, do you have anything else, because?
For the police department, that's it.
Okay. Do you have anything else on here?
The confidential secretary for HR.
Yep, we said we're gonna discuss that. Anything else?
The mayor's office, the Florida clerk, I'd like to, you can vote on that.
What is it?
The clerk, the Florida secretary, I don't know if that's a full-time or a part-time position.
That wasn't budgeted, just to clarify.
It was not budgeted.
So how many secretaries are in the office, at the mayor's office?
There's one full-time and one part-time.
Stephanie and Mrs. Fowas, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, we're, actually, there's two part-timers at the moment, we're transitioning one to another, sorry.
What does that mean?
Where are they at?
I don't see them in the budget.
Yeah, they're not in the budget at all.
It's part-time under the mayor's department.
Mayor's office?
You still got a budget for a part-time position.
Yeah, there's, there's no part-times.
Yeah, there's no part-time.
The personnel budgets do not show part-timers for any of the departments.
We show, we budgeted for part-times.
We budgeted for them in the budget, they're not in the personnel pages. Only full-time employees are in the personnel pages.
That is true, that is true. I mean, I wish you would have put that in there as well. So then the mayor's budget could potentially be off by two forty-thousand dollars each?
No, because with part-timers, we control their time, and we always make sure that they don't go above what the part-time allotted amount is.
What's the, what's the part-time date?
What's the part-time what?
What's the part-time that they stay? Isn't there a term limit for a part-time employee?
Six months.
Six months for union positions, but there are exemptions for three positions that can be there forever, part-time. So there's three positions in the unit that are exempt from the six-month rule.
These aren't union positions.
These are not union positions, no, part-timers are not union positions.
Correct, so what's the union got to do with that position?
Again, it's the rule of the six months, that only three of them don't have to be in the six-month rule. So it is exempt from that, because the union requested that we don't hire too many part-timers on a six, more than six-month basis, because that takes the position of a full-time employee.
So you're saying that the two part-timers that are working for the mayor will only be here for six months?
No.
So how can they be part-timers?
There's three exempt positions that are full-time, part-time positions, one of them used to be in the HR department back in the day as well. I don't know if you remember, she was a young student that was here, she's still here, there's another one that stepped in.
Part-time at the HR, move them to the mayor's office, part-time at the mayor's office.
Again, there's three of them, so there's one in HR, there's some in the.
And then you just circulate them around, right?
Not typically, we try to keep them as long as they want to stay, but, again, part-time positions eventually move on to other things.
Okay, great.
Council chair.
Yes.
We did budget for the part-time in the mayor's budget, for twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty, part-time.
That's good.
Right, so do we exceed that, do we exceed the twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars a year?
Not in this final one.
No.
Do you have the numbers for?
Yeah, not in the final, the one we got to today.
Not in the personnel sheet, in the budget itself.
Can you give me the current budget, where are the part-time positions?
Twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty.
For twenty-twenty, for this year's budget?
Yeah. I'm gonna go on to the mayor, because I know he was patiently waiting. Go ahead, mayor.
Okay, so, I don't know if you guys remember, I don't know which hearing it was, council chair, but the cops office, you know, the Department of Justice, you know, when, when they came here, when Chief Hart, you know, when he came to the city, he actually requested for them to be here. So they made an assessment of the entire police department, and actually, they're here next week, so they're here continuously, just trying to help our.
They've never come here, though, I've never met them.
No, well, I mean, they've had, they've opened it up for council members to meet with them.
Nobody's ever told me.
Well.
Yeah, sure. I have.
Well, if, if you want to meet them on Monday, Tuesday.
Send me an email, I'd love it. Go ahead, I'll meet you, lunch on you.
I'll buy you lunch.
I like that, thank you. See that? Who sent me in the mail, couldn't get along?
So, one of the things, they made some recommendations, and that's the recommendations we followed, you know, with the DOJ, the cops office. And, you know, they're the highest in, in the US that actually makes recommendations. So, they, they actually volunteered to come to Dearborn Heights, you know, because of, you know, the, we requested that. And just, just to let the public know, usually when the DOJ or the cops office, they come into a city, it's usually not a good thing if they come on their own, which is a consent decree, which is a lot of money to the city.
I'm gonna stop you right there, mayor, because I don't want to instill any more fear, because we've already.
No, 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 I'm just explaining, I'm explaining, because a lot of people.
No, we're saying they come in here out of fear, you just said, you heard, brought them here.
Council chair, may I? You know, I'm just saying.
If we're gonna instill any more fear, I'm gonna say.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm just telling you that they're actually transitioning, there's a lot of things that they're doing at the police department.
That's good.
They're offering training, you know, they're paying for some training.
Good, see, those are the things, that's great, that's what we want to hear.
So one of the things that they offered, councilman, council chair, please.
Yes.
Okay, so they made some recommendations, there were some officers that were doing actual work that they should be on the street, right? So some of the positions that you guys talked about, it was done by somebody in the department, so now they're on the road, they're actually doing actual police work. So some of the positions that they were doing before, now we have to bring civilians, you know, not, you know, MCO certified to do those positions.
Now, can I stop you for a second, mayor? And I respect that, and I, I salute to the DOJ, and thank you for the services. I look forward to the email and hanging out with them on Monday. But what I will tell you is, you never brought it before council, ever. Council had no idea these positions were brought up, the DOJ made the recommendation, you guys had put them there and pay them. And, and to me, we didn't go through an amendment budget on this. This is the same thing that has happened with, you know, that feels like in the police department, no other department, that we are constantly just hiring people in there and never consulting the legislative body, which has been come, obviously, we can't speak on, on the stipulation that's taking place, but we are currently in litigation because of this, we are in federal court because things like this continue to happen. I'm, I'm all for hearing the DOJ, but the DOJ is not, they can make the recommendation with you and the, and the police chief, but the council is who spends the money, not the police chief and the mayor.
Council chair.
Thank you.
Those positions were still, they were existing positions.
Done by a police officer.
They were done by, exactly, so, yeah, so the police officers on the road, so we have not exceeded the budget for the police. So the same people that are actually doing the work.
Are you saying the police officer used to make his salary of fifty thousand, plus make another fifty thousand for being the crime analysis?
No.
I don't, I don't think that's the case. So the, so the, these positions were never budgeted for in the past. Because according to this budget, it does not show that they were budgeted the year before.
They were budgeted through, a police officer, like, say, the example that the Chief of Staff mentioned, a lieutenant was actually doing FOIAs.
Yeah, but the lieutenant position was only budgeted for, and maybe for overtime, it was never budgeted, hey, you're gonna be, you're gonna make eighty thousand as a lieutenant, I'm giving, you know, just examples. I don't know what a lieutenant makes, and I hope that they make a lot more, and I salute our police officers, but if they make eighty thousand here, we never said you're a crime analysis or a FOIA coordinator, you're gonna make an additional fifty-five thousand, which adds up to a hundred and forty thousand or a hundred and forty-five thousand. That was never the case. The case was, they are doing two jobs for the price of one, now we're doing, which is great, you know, have these positions, man, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. All I'm saying is, bring it before the council, be transparent to this council and say, hey, great, guys, I would like to hire these three people in the police department, like you guys usually do, but it feels like, you know, when, when the fire department goes to hire somebody, it comes before the council. Today, three positions, which we had no idea about, are now being budgeted, and they say, well, they started last year, yeah, great, we passed the budget last year, they weren't there, then you guys hired them, where did they get the money from? I don't know. How are they getting paid? I don't know, council never approved it. It was, madam clerk, can you tell me if there was ever anything on here that we approved for, was there any other resolution from the police department for these positions?
Not that I recall.
So, I mean, to me, it's disappointing. I, I want to give you these positions, but we have to do it with the right proper policy and procedure. Can't just say, you know what, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna create this new position, and I'm gonna bring this person in here from Westland. Because that's a lot of, that's another rumor that came in. Some of these positions are coming in from Westland, and we're hiring all these people from Westland. Nothing gets Westland, hire from Dearborn Heights. Hire our own union positions to do it.
Council chair.
Go ahead, councilman.
So again, it's, it's, we, we have a charter that we follow, at least this body follows. The mayor keeps violating this char, the charter, mayor's violated Act Seventy-Eight, Section Five, eleven.
Councilman, this is not about the budget.
But, but it is about the budget, because these sections clearly are the budget. And it says it has to come in front of council for approval. I don't care if the DOJ or what president made the recommendation. This is taxpayer money, and the charter says that.
I just said that.
Council chair.
Yep, mayor.
Again, okay, so I, I don't have the, the lieutenant's pay, so let's say, for example, using this one here, it has an average of ninety-nine thousand dollars you're paying a lieutenant. Okay, so now you got a FOIA coordinator, you're paying that FOIA coordinator sixty-six thousand. The person, the lieutenant that was here, he was not, all that person was doing is FOIAs, that's all, just FOIAs. Was not doing his police, you know, he was not doing what a lieutenant, like, say, supervised, he was doing, he was doing FOIAs, that's all that lieutenant was doing. So when the lieutenant left, left the gap.
Guys, nothing from the audience, please.
So, council chair, we brought, we brought a, it, it was posted, and it did go to the civil service process.
But it didn't come through the council.
But it was already budgeted for the FOIA coordinator, but it, it was a FOIA coordinator before, if you look at it.
No, it was a lieutenant, you said.
Yeah, but it's still a FOIA coordinator.
No, it was lieutenant.
Yeah, but the lieutenant, that's all he was doing is FOIAs.
I understand that, but he was being budgeted as a lieutenant, he was never being budgeted as a FOIA coordinator.
Council chair.
Hang on, councilman. So, I'm, I'm all for giving you these three positions, I will support them here, right on the news, telling you, I will give them all to you. Just do it the right way. Come before the council, submit the resolution, and say, guys, I want to hire these three people, we have the budget for it, I will one hundred percent support you, the police department and the DOJ, but what I will not do is spend taxpayers' money without coming before us.
Council chair.
Go ahead, councilman.
So, you know, the police department is already top-heavy, so it's like telling a sergeant by saying he's a road patrol sergeant. That's what they're trying to insinuate that this position was. It's a new position, but even the lieutenant.
That's on the chief's position.
But, 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 exactly, saying we had this officer go, this lieutenant, who's no longer here, be put back into his duties. Where already the department is top-heavy, we're not having enough people on the road. Lieutenants are not on the road. Thank you.
Thank you. And guys, councilman, I want you guys to keep in mind, we are not here to tell the police department what to do and how to operate, and who should be doing what, that is not my role. The mayor wants to do that, that's his role, sure, go ahead and do it. I believe it stands before the police chief, police chief should have that role. If the police chief wants these three positions, and it's recommended by the Department of Justice, uh, come to the city council. Because in America, when the governor wants something, she goes to the legislative body. When the president wants something, they go to Congress. The mayor, he should become to Dearborn Heights City Council. He should not be just saying, sure, we're gonna bring you in from Westland and start working. That, that just does not operate. I also don't want this person to lose their job, whoever's in these positions, because I don't know any of them, and, and I'm sure they're doing a great job. But could one of our union employees who've been here for twenty-five, thirty years be working these positions? Can they have the opportunity like Bill Dushum had? Can they have the opportunity like Dana, who's working now in the clerk's office? You know, can these individuals have these opportunities? You have some employees who live in the City of Dearborn Heights that's been working for us for thirty years. Hey, you know what, I'm gonna make you the corner, you know, the FOIA coordinator.
Council chair.
Yep, go ahead, councilman.
I'm sorry, just, I'm so sorry, just one thing, I know we keep saying DOJ, actually, whatever we have is a consulting company that works through the DOJ. So it's a contractor, civil company, that work through a program through the DOJ. So it just, basically, it's this consulting company, the DOJ have that program that sends to police departments. So we do thank them for that, but just keep in mind, it's not the DOJ itself, it's a consulting company.
I've never met him, so I can't.
I met him one time, and that's what they told me, I gave me their business card, so.
Yeah, they do not investigate.
So they're not DOJ, they're a consulting company that works through our program through the DOJ.
Really?
Okay, guys, nothing from the audience, please.
Just to be clear, so.
Thank you. Councilman Wanso, I know I held you up.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Mariana, are we okay here? Making progress. So, I mean, what is our, so let's add up the three that would be potentially removed. Making progress. So, I mean, what is our, so let's add up the three that would be potentially removed with the.
You're talking about the foyer, logistics, and.
And put in the HR confidential secretary in here. Any of these positions that want to come before us, we can make a budget amendment, and we can budget them, and we can do it the right way. I'm sure they went to civil service, they took the test, they did all the great work. That is amazing. They never came before council to approve them to be working with us.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
The HR, the secretary did come before us, we turned it down.
Yeah. And then I'd also like to add in the raises for, like the Councilman said, for the CDBG. What are you looking for, the HR?
HR, yeah.
Oh, it's right here. I got it. I got it for you. HR is budgeted for fifty-five thousand. Subtract the three total numbers if you need the, oh, you got the police ones, right?
Yeah, you're talking about the foyer, logistic, crime analyst, plus. That would take us to two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, six hundred.
That's how much we'd be saving?
That's how much we'd be saving. We're still short about.
So check what we're short of. Is there also adding in the third person?
No.
No, add in the ordinance officer.
We have to add in that third person.
So if we remove those four positions, we're still short twenty-one thousand, nine-hundred-ninety-four thousand, sixty-four cents.
Add now, plus what it is for another ordinance officer.
Forty-four thousand, four hundred and.
How much?
Forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Forty-four thousand, seven hundred?
No, I don't think that's correct.
Forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
For ordinance officer starting pay?
Yeah.
We can even overbudget this one just a little bit. If it's at forty-four, just put it like.
I think it's a forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven, yes.
Okay, go ahead. George, I know this may be a little crazy that I'm asking you after an hour and thirty-seven minutes into it, but have you been taking notes of things that we're removing and adding and doing any of that, or no? Wow, can we give a round of applause to our great, does a great job. Thank you. George does a great job.
Hopefully.
Because our notes here.
So if we add the third ordinance officer, we'll be short sixty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-one and sixty-four cents.
Okay. I mean, look, I think us here isn't a body. We have to make a tough decision as well.
You know, you gotta take in mind, too, also, when we cut or add a position, you gotta consider the fringe benefits.
Correct, correct, correct. I've already, I've already put it in my mind, so we're like an additional twenty-five thousand somewhere in there, right? That's why I said this one, we're gonna, a little overbudget it. So add maybe another twenty-five thousand, assuming they have longevity, they get health insurance, they get sick pay time, and, you know.
So that would take us to ninety-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-one.
Okay. Put ninety-one thousand there. So I just, I, I thought about this deeply, guys, on how to make this decision. And I said to myself, if we find, you know, give or take a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars off in the budget, how do we make it right? Where do we fix this? What I'd like to potentially see happen, and, you know, it's obviously up to this entire body and what you guys decide and what you guys want to do, I think what we can potentially do is, there's different ways we can do this. We are right now giving every director in the city a five percent raise. We can either, A, eliminate that position, or we can minimize it and to make it, you know, two-point-five percent raise. So that we're still giving them somewhat of a raise, because we want to make sure that we're paying good employees and not losing them to other cities. We can also find a way, I know that the police department and the fire department, and I thank them so much, have a. I think the police department is about a million dollars in overtime, and about eight-hundred thousand in the fire department. I think if we ask them each to cut fifty thousand dollars each, which is not much, very, very minimal, and we eliminate, you know, the raises to two-and-a-half percent, we could potentially see a surplus of almost a hundred thousand dollars versus the thousand sixty-six, which was told by the mayor, which in reality, we would have been short close to, maybe two-hundred thousand dollars. But after making some of the cuts that we made, we can, we can see a budget that's extremely fiscally responsible, like all of us have promised to do when we ran for the seat, to be in public office.
Council Chair.
Yes.
But keep in mind, if we eliminate those positions from the police department, that means we're taking police officers and putting on those positions.
Correct.
So we're gonna have less police officers on the road, so, I mean, most likely, the mayor's gonna come back and fix it, and.
That is fine, but if we're cutting, I'm saying, two-point-five percent down, we should be able to see a surplus. And then the administration with Plank Moran can figure out how to budget for those positions. Because you can't just throw people out there and say, hey, pay them, and we'll just take the money out of the reserves account, or we're gonna take it from our funds. It's not the way to operate. And it's definitely not the way to operate to say, we're gonna walk into the city and say, you got a job, you got a job, you got a job. This isn't Wolf of Wall Street.
Council Chair.
Yep.
Also, I'd like to see, since we do have an engineering department, I'd like to see our.
We've requested the engineering department income?
Not yet, and I'm not, I'm not talking about that. But I'd like to cut back on the spending at least half.
You know, Councilman, so what we're gonna do is, after we pass a budget, because you have people here that are waiting, we are going to go into, and you can have my word on this, a study session will go into play where we're gonna deep dive into this, or dive deep into this, and you can have those conversations, and we can amend this budget. Guys, this is a fluke document.
Council Chair, I respect what you're saying, but I have no faith that anything we don't put on the record, and even if we do put on the record.
You can put it on the record.
And even if we put it on the record, it's, it's, it's not ever followed.
Well, that's, you know, then that's when things from like the State Treasury Department can reach out to the administration.
If these adjustments aren't made, I know where I stand on my vote, because this is, we came here to work on this budget to try to get it passed. And I want to see a surplus of.
Well, that's what we're doing here.
Yeah, it's, I'm not satisfied with the surplus.
But did you go through this prior to this, or do you have those numbers, or are you just looking through it today now?
No, I'm trying to, well, we know way trim, we got an engineering department to cost, but over the past two years, it's, it's exceeded what it was previously paid. It makes no sense. We're in the millions. It's, don't worry about smiling, but it's, we're, we're just paying unbelievable money. Then we have this fun scout, who does grants for us, too. We should be eliminating, it's just.
There's a contract with them, so we have to be careful with eliminating.
We can, we can cut, we're not eliminating.
And I'm ultimately here to do what's best, whatever you guys want to do, but I think most importantly here, we're trying to find a way to find a balanced budget with a surplus, so that our city services are not shut down, so that our police, fire, all of our employees can go to work, and so that our residents can be protected. That is, that is our ultimate goal today, because clearly, since April, we've met, and we have not been able to get here, and we're at the final minute. And I'm sorry to the residents that we are here and doing this to you guys, and I'm sorry to our employees at City Hall that we are doing this to you guys. I'm sorry for the fear-mongering that has went across through the media and emailed to the council. But I want you to know that my colleagues and I are doing the best that we can. And I'm gonna also tell you that if, hopefully, we can pass this budget tonight, so that we don't go into a city shutdown, that we can have a, go take a deep dive into this entire budget once again with Plank Moran, who works for the taxpayers, and worked for us as well. Michelle has done a phenomenal job, but I think there's a lot of discrepancies in this, and we need to find a way to balance this out equally. Mayor, I think you said you had a few things that you wanted to state.
No, for the engineering, Council Chair.
Yeah.
For the engineering services. So, you know, one of the things that, I mean, some of the stuff that we're working on is actually mandated by, you know, for the CSO projects, that the engineering service, not mentioning, obviously, their name publicly, but we do have a contract with them, and we are, we are required to have the CSO projects done. And that's why we had the engineering services, the fees that we have in the budget, that we went over before.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Good job, guys. Yep.
Madam Chief of Staff, I know we budgeted for thirty-three firefighters. Do we know how many we have right now? I know thirty-nine was requested, and we only budgeted for thirty-three.
Madam Clerk, is that Chief Broganon? You can ask him to unmute himself.
We budgeted for thirty-three firefighters, and we currently have.
They know we're trying to hire more, right?
Yes.
We're short like five or six?
Five, we're short. Yeah, we're five short, so we are trying to hire more.
Is he on?
Hi, Council, I'm here. Could I do the answer?
Yeah, hey, Chief, how many firefighters we have right now?
Oh, we're down six right now, so that's where you see the difference.
So how many do we have total, though?
So we have fifty-three.
No, this is all together. I'm just talking about the firefighters. We, because a request of thirty-nine was in the budget, we only budgeted for thirty-three. So how many firefighters do we have? Not the battalion chief, not the fire inspector, not the marshal, not the lieutenant, no captains, just the firefighter.
And Chief, if you don't know off the top of your head, that's okay, you can get back with us.
Yeah, it's, we have thirty-nine firefighters.
Thirty-nine, we're short five. Okay.
Okay, how are we budgeting for thirty-three, then?
So, I know when we get them hired, I think the plan was, when we get them hired, the overtime will come down, and that's gonna make up for the difference.
Yeah, but you're saying we have thirty-nine, but we're only budgeting thirty-three regular firefighters.
No, no, we only have thirty-three. We're supposed to have thirty-nine, sorry.
Okay, so we're not budgeting for the five that we're short right now.
Correct.
So we have to keep in mind, Council Chair, the overtime for the fire department is eight-hundred thousand. The projected for this year was nine-hundred-and-fifty-three, four-fifteen.
Chief, I got a question for you.
Sure.
Say we're to cut your overtime by fifty thousand or seventy-five thousand, you think that's something that you could work out with the firefighters and the men and women there?
I do, especially once, once things start moving forward, I really hope to fill these spots, hopefully rapidly, and that will make a huge dent in that overtime.
How many have we interviewed? Do you know?
Well, we haven't interviewed any right now. We have one that's a potential candidate that's just going through a background. He's our, I guess, so he's been interviewed. And then we have several that have expressed interest. The contract isn't settled yet. Once the contract's settled and becomes more public, I expect to have more people, and we'll have the ability to hire basic EMTs as well.
Thank you. So you're saying you are okay with cutting it, say, by seventy-five thousand?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Madam Clerk, is our police chief on here? Is anybody from the directors on? Can you unmute Director Swope for me, please?
So the.
Thank you, here. Hey, thank you so much, Director, for being here with us today.
Sure.
Director, just for the record, if we were to find a way to balance this budget, would you be okay if we cut down the overtime by seventy-five thousand dollars, or maybe a hundred thousand dollars?
Well, you know, with, you know, we're trying to do some hiring as well, right? We have three people in academy right now. The more people we hire.
The less overtime.
The less overtime. And I know we just interviewed four or five candidates last week, and I think HR got an email from Councilman Saab saying that was, it was inappropriate to continue with the process of hiring those public safety officials. So I'm not exactly sure if we'd be able to do that, especially.
Councilman Saab, you said emailed him? Emailed the HR director?
That's what I was told, yeah.
Yeah.
He's right there, I don't know if he did or not.
I did not. So, yeah, I don't know if that's true. Do you have that email?
Yeah, I can send it to you.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, so basically, and if we lose these civilian positions.
My question, my question to you is, would you be okay with us eliminating anywhere between seventy-five thousand to a hundred? Would it affect you guys? If you're saying we're gonna hire five, which.
Which we budgeted for seven more that we don't have.
Yeah, and we've already budgeted for seven additional. Can we cut this down by seventy-five thousand or a hundred thousand in overtime?
I mean, I can't promise that we could stay within that with the amount of overtime we'd need if we're taking officers and placing them in civilian positions.
Well, okay.
I mean, we'd have to cut our traffic safety program, which would then, you know, probably, you know, impact the safety of our residents.
So are you saying you don't feel comfortable with taking away seventy-five thousand dollars to balance the budget to potentially stop a citywide shutdown?
I mean, you can take whatever you want, but all I'm saying is, we may have to come back for a amendment at some point.
Okay, if you need to come back for the seventy-five thousand, maybe when we deep dive, we'll be able to get you that seventy-five thousand back. I just want, you know, you don't know that we want to respect you guys, ask you guys to kind of help us and help this administration, and help this, help the entire city, and just find us a way to balance this budget. And we can't do that, because we have, just for the record, we have cut from DPW, we have cut from ordinance, we have cut from everybody except for police and fire. The fire said absolutely, no, that's okay, we'll figure it out. I'm hoping that you can kind of just mirror that same response.
Oh, of course, we can figure it out, you know, obviously.
Thank you.
Like I said, we'd make some cuts.
Thank you. And then obviously, you know that we budgeted the police, because you guys are, I believe, a lot bigger, so we budgeted, we budgeted the overtime a lot more for the police department than we did for the fire department. But like you said, we might be hiring five more. We budgeted for seven. Hopefully, they'll cut that down by maybe even, who knows, two-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand. That would be amazing for the taxpayers.
Council Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council Chair.
Yep.
With no disrespect to Director Swope, does he have the authority to make that decision?
Well, he's.
Just a recommendation.
It's his recommendation, and.
Yeah, you asked him if it's possible. I mean, it's.
Okay.
It's okay.
Do you disagree?
No, I'm just saying, I'm wondering. That's like, I mean, he's not the chief.
I know, but the chief's not on.
Well, there's an officer. I'll try to ask the officer over there.
I mean, I don't know if the officer.
Council Chair, make that.
I was just asking if, I mean, I'm glad he agreed to it, but I just wondered, is that something that, you know, now, if he gets together with the chief tomorrow and says, no way. You know, and we budgeted, you know, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, Mayor, did you have something?
No, I'm just saying, the director spoke, Council Chair.
Yeah.
So he made a recommendation.
No, I made the recommendation. I asked him to.
No, I understand, but he agreed, so.
Thank you.
We're not gonna ask an officer.
That's okay.
Like I say, no disrespect to Director Swope whatsoever. I'm just wondering, you know.
How much are we off right now, by?
We were up by ninety-one, four-seven, oh, no, this is just.
Nobody.
Yeah, yeah, ninety-one, four-seven, ninety-one, four-hundred and seventy-one and sixty-four cents.
Okay, now let's just say we were to cut those, you know, seventy-five thousand times two. That puts us at one-forty.
One-fifty.
I'm sorry, what am I thinking? Forgive me. It's one-fifty. And we are also going to say we potentially cut the raises for the directors from, you know, five percent to two-and-a-half.
That's something.
Which, I'm sure Matty can come up with that number.
For directors and deputy directors?
Correct. And I know the deputy director received a five percent increase when he shouldn't have received, because we had just given him the raise. So that should have not even gotten a five percent increase.
Council Chair.
Deputy Controller. Yes.
Just for Director Swope, can you forward that email to me, please? Thank you.
He said he'll forward it to me, and I'll forward it over to you. I don't recall seeing any of it, but.
I don't see any of my emails.
He said he heard it from there, and then he said he has an email, so. God bless everybody. Thank you all for being here today, by the way. We appreciate each and every single one of you. So, you want, you guys want to make a decision on this? Any other council member want to make any other recommendation for this? Yep, go ahead.
Another possibility would be to have all the directors and the deputy directors give up one week's pay.
Uh, we can't ask.
I'll give up a whole month myself.
I know. If I needed to give up mine as well, I think I would do that as well, but just for the full disclosure.
Council Chair.
Out of the red, let's vote.
I would like.
Holding people up here for dinner.
I'd like to see raises across the board, not just directors. So honestly, I'd be in favor of removing all raises until everybody's able to get a raise, proper raise.
Just want you to know, we've given police, we're giving firefighters, we're giving, that is not our spot to negotiate for the union. Today, we are talking about the budget. Again, guys, when we dig deep, we can go, we can go back into this. You have, everybody is focusing in on Dearborn Heights right now, you know? I know Councilwoman, and I just, we've got to be transparent. This is, we sign up for this type of work. So I know sometimes Friday at a seven o'clock, I don't want to be here any more than you don't want to, but, you know, we just, we have to make certain decisions. Any other council members want to make recommendations?
Did we come up with a number for reducing the directors' raise?
I'm waiting on Matty right now.
I'm not in favor of reducing any of it. We already gave it to them. I'm not in favor of reducing the directors' pay raise at all. How much was it? Do you know? Did you come up with a figure?
From what I recall, the total increase for all of the five percent increases for all non-union positions is not just deputies and directors. It was, I believe, forty thousand dollars total.
What is it?
It was forty thousand dollars total.
For what?
For the five percent increases for all non-union positions.
It was like forty-three, I believe, but I don't wanna take that away from you guys, I don't, I still believe you guys deserve to keep something, and then if we can give you the additional, we wanna give that to you guys, but I just want you to do, it was forty-two thousand and some change, we can call it, you know, you know, I don't know, I wouldn't know how to break that number down, but what we could do is in the recommendation, maybe Gary, you can help us on that, say that we're gonna approve this budget, because right now, if we take seventy-five thousand from each, we're gonna have some type of a surplus of how much?
Fifty-eight thousand, five-hundred and twenty-one.
Fifty-eight thousand, with potentially another twenty thousand, that puts us at almost a seventy-five thousand dollar surplus, everybody's happy, if we need to come back and make certain decisions, we can do that, so why don't we do a recommendation, Madam Clerk, Gary, I don't know, I'm just kind of leaning on you a little bit to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in any tough spots?
Council Chair, just one more.
Just real quick, what I'm trying to say is, we go through the recommendation of eliminating these three positions, four positions, fixing up the numbers that we have to fix up...
And adding one.
And adding a...
An ordinance officer.
An ordinance officer.
Council Chair, it may be helpful, then, to take a short recess for the clerk, council secretary, Ms. Hernandez, and this gentleman, and perhaps yourself, or just to make sure we have all the things listed?
Okay.
And then, just to end up having a motion that reflects all those changes, otherwise it's gonna potentially miss something and be a problem.
Okay, let's come back, let's come back until about seven-oh, seven-oh-five, we'll be back.
Sorry, before we crunch the numbers, can we vote on all the positions and whether or not you want those removed?
We're not making a vote on anything right now until, it's gonna be in our motion.
Okay.
Yes, everything will be in our motion. We are back here, ladies and gentlemen, I know we said seven-oh-seven, I think we might eight-oh-seven, but we're back, you know, I wanna first and foremost thank the Chief of Staff, Mariana, I wanna thank Mehdi from the Controller's office, really, Mehdi was a rock star inside that room, we went line item by line item, we had to make certain decisions, I believe Councilman Constan will have to make some amendment, Councilman Ahmad will also make the additions of what we did, what we've forgotten mistakenly made was, congratulations to the four sergeants or the three, I believe it was four sergeants that were appointed or were, got the promotion, and so we were still budgeting them as a regular officers, and we didn't budget them as sergeants, so our numbers were off, thank you to those who sent us that information as well, so we are going to amend this motion, I believe there is going to be a surplus of...
One-seventy-seven thousand and two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars.
So, we'll see a hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollar surplus, this will allow us to potentially go back with the administration, meet up again, maybe apply for those positions, even though they went through civil service, but make sure that they come to the council so we can properly give them those positions, but in the meantime, we are going to have the Councilman Constan amend his motion, and then I'm going to ask for the second it was by Councilman Saab, and then the decisions and things that were changed will follow through with the motion with Councilman Ahmad.
Before the second I had the...
Correct, okay, well, before the second...
Council Chair?
Yes.
Council Chair, I'd like to state that I don't think it was too cool and very disrespectful to myself and the other three council members that weren't invited back for that special meeting that you held back there with everyone else, and we didn't get invited to come back there, very, very disrespectful.
I just want you to know, I apologize, I can't make the decision for...
You don't have to apologize.
It's okay, I just want you to know, I took advice of Special Legal Counsel. It's okay.
If I may?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
When issues came up, Councilman, if I may?
Don't excuse us, I don't need excuses, no, thank you.
That's okay.
If I may, I just wanna just clarify that there were not decisions and...
No input from me whatsoever, right?
They were advised not to end up engaging deliberations, just to engage...
In what we spoke about during the meeting.
In the details in the meeting, so...
Thank you, again, Councilman, I'm sorry, I know you're tired of your feelings, it's okay, it's okay.
All right, let's just move on.
All right.
Move on, please.
So, Councilman Constan, would you like to amend your motion?
Council Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to amend my motion...
Turn on your mic, is it on?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to amend my motion to add the following, moreover, in adopting this budget resolution, the following changes shall be incorporated in, and made to the detailed materials most recently presented as part of the City Council agenda, to be part of the detailed budget to arrive at and adopt the final budget, including changes, and Councilman Hassan Ahmad?
Thank you, Councilman, so the changes would be adding one ordinance officer in the ordinance department, adding four additional sergeant's position in the Police Department, amending the fifty patrol officer's budget to forty-five positions, amending all TPOAM clerical position to reflect the correct salaries stated in the collective bargaining agreement, removing the HR confidential secretary position, removing FOIA coordinator in PD, logistic coordinator in the PD department, crime analyst, crime analyst in the PD department, removing seventy-five thousand from the Police Department overtime, removing seventy-five thousand from the Fire overtime, removing the five percent salary increase for the deputy controller, and we would have a surplus of hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Saab, would you like to second that?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can somebody else second it? Gary, can somebody else second it?
I'll second it.
Council Chair can...
Hang on, one second.
Yes, someone else can second the motion to amend the motion.
Motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilwoman Denise Malowski Maxwell, any other discussion?
Council Chair?
Yep.
The discussion I just have, I wanted to, I wanna approve this budget, with it being coming back in front of council, I'd like to see at least another seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars shaved off the budget, I'm asking for it today, but I'd like to see it off, I'd like it to come from our, you know, our engineering that we're paying out, and I tried to discuss that before we went into the meeting, but you guys, I don't know if we can talk about it back there, so I wanna put that on the record, I'd like the administration to come back, or have a special meeting to amend the budget, to, administration come back to shave seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars additional, because I believe we're either gotta eliminate a position or eliminate a company, it's one of the two, we shouldn't create a position and just hiring outside third-party companies working and just charging three or four times that amount, I understand we have to have streets fixed and CEO SO programs, but that's what our engineers for, he's a public, he's a PE, so...
I agree, I agree, and so I...
I would like, if the amendment's made, I would like that to include it into this amendment, and that would make me vote.
So, I want you to know, this is a fluid document, so when we meet up on Tuesday, you can put a resolution at any meeting and say, "I went through these documents, this is what I wanna have fixed, this is what I'd like to see taken off", we can have a study session on it later on, and then you would take it to a council meeting and you would vote on that, this document can be voted on anytime you want, it's not just today, today is to go before the fiscal year of July first, which is Monday, so that's what vote we have before us today, there's a surplus of one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, look, I know all of us are really tied into this, you have that fiduciary duty, but I would, I would hope that, you know, for the residents seeing that we have the surplus, we can all vote on this unanimously, because all of us in here, including the residents, including those who are here and on Zoom, have been waiting tirelessly for this, but either way, we have a motion on the table, I'd like to make a vote on this.
Discussion?
What is that?
You can take discussion?
I did, you wanna do some more discussion?
Yeah, I'm not having a lot of things on this budget, I just, and I don't wanna pass it just for having it on paper and say we passed it and then work on everything later...
What is it that you don't like?
I don't like a lot of the cuts, like I mentioned, the cuts in the DPW, there's taking away part of the raises for the directors.
We kept the raises.
We kept the raises, and we didn't cut anything from DPW, and right now we have a surplus.
There's six-hundred thousand dollars cut, and I agree with Councilman Saab, I mean, we should, we should have something on record with saying that we aren't gonna cut this budget.
What I'm saying is, you don't have to have one, you can do that on Tuesday.
You know how many times I've tried to amend the budget in my seven years here? And I always say it, it never happens, very rarely, you know, one out of twenty times, it'll go through.
Council Chair?
Yep, Councilman.
Oh, you know, that's fine, I'm good, no, I'm good, I'm done.
Okay, Councilman Constan?
The only problem is, and I've been through this when I was in the state legislature, I mean, the deadline is here, and I don't hear anybody saying these additional changes can't be made, but we, we have got some numbers finalized, everyone worked hard, you worked hard today, and the Chief of Staff, so we need to have an up or down vote.
Council Chair, I'm just asking, I'm asking to remove seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the budget, I'd like to put on the record with this amendment to the budget that another seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars be sent to the administration to chop off and bring back, I'm not saying that it has to happen today.
Yeah, that's...
And I just want that entered to this motion, that's it.
Okay, can we somehow add that to the motion that the, okay, Councilman Constan, will you amend your motion to...
I think it already is, I think it already is.
No, no, but amend it one more time so that the administration says that they're gonna look into finding a way of cutting seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, hang on one second, Roger, please, so the motion is not saying you are going to cut seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, the motion says you're gonna look into it, and it's not asking for seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand today, it's saying, in the fiscal year, you're gonna look into finding seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand somewhere.
I see our Gary Miatki wants to say something.
As a special legal counsel, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, you could have it taken care of as an incidental motion after this main motion, it kind of will gunk things up if you try to include it, I don't know that it really works with the overall motion, since you already have...
I like that.
So, Council Chair, just not waste time, can we, can we pause this motion, put that motion first?
We have a motion on the table, you have to vote on this, you can then suspend the rules and add another motion.
Are we gonna suspend the rules and add the motion?
You gotta take a vote on that, I don't think anybody's here is disagreeing with you.
I agree, no, it is disagreeing with you, Councilman.
Yeah, listen, I said this in the beginning of the meeting, we wanna move forward on this, you know, and we wanna make this as smooth as possible, so there's a motion on the table, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Denise Malonowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Robert Constan?
Yes.
Mo Bedun?
Yes.
And Hassan Saab?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, you wanna put a motion on the table to suspend the rules?
Council Chair, I'd like to suspend the rules, add a motion.
Motion to suspend.
Hang on, one second.
You just adopted a motion to amend the main motion, I don't know that you actually adopted the overall amended motion.
We did, they read it.
Did they?
Yes.
Yeah, we did it, we did the motion, then we amended that motion, and then moreover, we amended it again.
We had long discussions.
Oh, okay, no, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, I didn't, I thought it was...
We amended the motion, and Councilman Constan and Councilman...
So, you both, you did that both at the same time?
Yes, Councilwoman Malonowski Maxwell seconded the motion.
Malonowski Maxwell.
I stand corrected, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
You stand correctly or incorrectly?
No, I stand corrected, if I misheard, I, no, the city clerk got it right, so...
That's all. Okay.
So, we need to vote on suspension of the rules?
Okay, does somebody wanna make a motion to...
I did, I made a motion.
I seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Saab, to suspend the rules, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries, Councilman, what would you like your motion to make?
I'd like my motion to be to bring the administration within ten days to chop off another seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the budget and bring it back to council.
I think you said look into.
Yeah.
Chop, well, I wanna remove from the budget, not look into, the administration's gonna come back and say zero.
I know, can I ask you a question? Did you do your analysis to find the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand? You did, you know, so why in ten days you bring them also to the council?
I want the administration to do it, that's their job, not mine.
They don't know what you want done.
I want just seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the budget chopped off.
I know, but from what?
I want it from the engineering department.
What, did you see that seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand needs to be removed?
I want Platte Moran, I, Waitrim, and all the consultants dropped down, or that way we're gonna either remove the engineering department and have an outside party do it, or it's gonna be one of the two, we're overspending on these projects, and we're not getting nothing in return but spending more, by us even adding the engineering department in the past year, we've exceeded the amount that we've spent in three years.
Okay, okay, so your motion is, there's a number, what do we even, what does that department even look at, can you tell me, Matty, is it even seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand?
It's not the engineering department, it's third parties.
Council Chair?
It's spread across the water department, the engineering department, it's not just strictly...
Right, contractual services.
It's contractual services across all, in many different departments, so it's not gonna be seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, it's not gonna be seven-hundred-and-fifty... It's not gonna be seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from one department, it's gonna be seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand total from the contractual services relating to engineering, that's what, Councilman Hassan Saab is...
But I'm asking contractual services, have we spent so far this year, or can you tell me what we spent last year?
I can get that information to you by tomorrow, this end of the weekend, I can...
You know what, give it back to us on Tuesday, take your time, enjoy the week, you've been working real hard.
I mean, I am gonna work this weekend, but we're good.
Thank you.
Council Chair? Councilman Constan? And with all due respect to Councilman Saab, maybe we can refer this and make this part of our study session?
Well, that's what I was thinking, but...
We got, go ahead, go ahead.
It's okay, so you want to give a timeline, I think ten days is short, it's fourth of July weekend, you gotta give at least twenty days here, Councilor.
I'll give them fourteen days.
Okay, what is that, what is that date, so we know from today?
Twelve?
July twelfth, Mayor, do you think you guys are gonna look at something like that?
We'll look into it, Council Chair.
And if not, then the council is gonna come with a budget amendment of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
We wanna make it the following Tuesday, the sixteenth, or by the fifteenth?
Yeah, let's do the sixteenth, because obviously...
I'd rather have it that Friday, because we're gonna have a meeting there.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do, no, you have a meeting on the eighth, the second of last Tuesday, you don't have any...
Ninth, ninth is our next regular meeting.
Yeah, so you can do it on the sixteenth, go ahead, that's a good observation.
Sixteenth?
By July sixteenth, and then we will have to have someone repeat the motion, please.
You wanna amend your motion, Councilman?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion to have the administration look and remove seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars contractor services by July sixteenth, or else I would, the council's gonna come with a...
Okay, that's your motion, that's not discussion.
No, that is my motion.
Nobody seconded it yet, even the first one.
Okay, no, we approved, we voted on a closed session, I mean, a...
No, I mean, uh- Suspension?
Yeah.
Yes.
Suspend the rules, now we have a motion by Councilman Saab to give finding seven hundred and fifty thousand cut by July sixteenth. Can I get a second?
From the budget.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Now, do we have to go back to a open session? I mean, no, we suspend the rules, rules are fine.
You, you entertain that.
Okay, next up, we have comments from-
Counsel Chair? I'd like to-
Hang on, one second, Councilman, one second, one second. Next up, we have comments from council members. Are you giving a comment on this part?
Yeah, on the budget. I'd like to take my no vote and say yes vote, because we got the motion passed.
He's changing his vote on the budget, yes.
You can't do that.
You can't do that.
You can't do that anymore.
You can't, you can't, I thought it's towards the end of the meeting till the meeting's done.
Come on, guys, guys.
Okay, it's fine, it's fine.
Go ahead.
It's fine.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you. Any other, uh, council members? Any comments from council members? Mayor? Have a good day. Thank you. I will just say just a few things, first and foremost, the Councilman Wenzel, I apologize, it was not my, I just talked to recommendations of our special legal counsel. Uh, I would have wanted every single person, including the ones in the audience and those on Zoom, to be there as well. Most importantly today, uh, to those who voted yes, I know even though Councilman Saab's vote was a no, I'm sure he really in his heart wanted to vote yes. Uh, I commend you guys, thank you to Mahdi Baydun, this man, he needs a round of applause because- And, and thank you to Mariana, and thank you for telling, allowing Mahdi to stand next to you, because at first, I know you said you wanted to take on the heat, but he really was a huge asset, and also a round of applause to Mariana from the Chief of Staff. Um, I am a little disappointed that Platte Moran Gap, I mean, if Mashaw wasn't here, that's one thing, but, you know, when you're this big company, you should have been here with us too. You see that we're all over the news, uh, you know, to, to not be here tonight, I'm pretty disappointed on that. I also want to say, uh, thank you, guys, and I know all you guys want to go home, so I will keep my message short. Happy fourth. Anyone else?
Counsel Chair?
Councilman Saab?
I'd also like to, uh, thank Matty and the Chief of Staff, Mariana, you guys did a phenomenal job, uh, because it's kind of disappointing that we had nobody from any, any sector of the departments here in the city. It's, 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 and it's ironic, everybody resigned the day of or the day before, so just put that to the record, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from council members? Okay, we're going to see none, announcements from administration?
I would just make one announcement, Counsel Chair, we, uh, we had a successful veterans' seminar, um, the first one we've had in the city, we had a Veterans Treatment Court from Dearborn and Veterans Treatment Court from Redford, we had seven attorneys present. We highlighted some numbers of new changes that have been, uh, by the federal government that Dearborn is implementing, and we work with Dearborn with our veterans. And it's the first start, it's on our website, and we will continue doing so.
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, and we do apologize that there was no one from the Controller's Office, but this had already been pre-scheduled, uh, when we hired the people that were there, um, so it was a transition, so we are changing our HR Director and our Controller starting next week, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone, I'm speaking as the city elected treasurer, um, this is my bi-annual announcement, to let you all know that the tax bills have gone to print, and that they will be mailed out next week and should be in your homes, and if you have any questions, please cause, call the treasurer's office at three one three, seven nine one, three four one zero, and there, all the information's available online July first, thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go to public comments. Comments, uh, I'm asking you have three minutes, please state your name, the city residing, and the street that you live on, this gentleman up here-
Oh, he wants to go first, okay.
Thank you, Mr.-
Not frightened.
Good evening, number from Region 1A, I'm on the executive board there, I represent a hundred and thirty-seven retirees, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand retirees.
Thank you.
And, uh, I know some of you have, I've been on the screening commission for over forty years. You're going to face this problem again in five years, and it's going to be massive. It's called the medical that you're paying for your employees currently. I am with a group that is going for Medicare for All or single payer. If we don't get into this, the city's going to go broke paying medical, and if they throw it on employees, they're not going to be able to afford it. Now, some of the examples I have, my friend just got a knee operation, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That same knee operation in Canada is eight thousand, in Australia is four thousand. And don't be buffaloed by it takes a long wait for this stuff, it doesn't in Canada. Canada is number three in the world in healthcare, we're thirteenth. We have the highest mortality rate for babies in black and brown in the inner city. Our, our seven thousand, eight thousand dollar deductibles, your car insurance is covered in there, all that will go away, all the deductibles will go away. You've got to get on board with this, I've been to other city councils and they pass resolutions that they'll, they'll help me, that's all I want, but thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and again, you guys are great in the audience, you really are, you stuck it out, so.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else, uh, from the audience? How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city residing, and the street that you live on.
Good afternoon, Hassan Eun from Dearborn. I just wanted to tell the council today that thank you for approving the budget, overwhelming for the residents, you know, because, uh, July first, you know, people go on Fourth of July weekend, you know, we're not going to sit here and come here on Sunday, right? We're on a barbecue, right, Mo? Well, Mr. Saab, seven hundred and fifty thousand, I think we should work together as a team, you know, stop arguing with each other, stop pointing the fingers, you know, Dearborn Heights is a good city, you know, I come here every time, you guys respect me, especially Counsel Chair, and all you guys are just beautiful over here, I just want to thank everybody for coming out here. At this time, we should, uh, make Dearborn Heights great again, two thousand twenty-four, if you know what I mean. I can't talk political, but unless we say, uh, Trump two thousand twenty-four.
Order. Sorry, can't have you do that, no political talking over here.
It's freedom of speech.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Thank you so much, please state your name, the city residing, and the street you live on, do not give me your address, just the street name.
Hello. My name is Lori Moline, I live on Burwin Street, I've lived in Dearborn Heights for thirty years. I have never come to a city council meeting, ever. This is my first.
Welcome.
Here's, here's something that I would really like to make a point at. While some of you were back there trying to get this job done, some were back here wanting to go home. Okay? I'm not talking the audience, I'm talking the council members. We hear you, we see you. Elections. This is a tough job, these guys have a tough job. You're part of that. Tom, he apologized to you at the last meeting, why? I should have listened to you. You hold weight, you all hold weight.